This is a regular meeting of the planning board. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of the July ninth meeting. You have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second, motion is made and seconded. Does anyone have any comments, modifications to these minutes? All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those against say nay. Chair votes aye, those minutes are approved. There's no correspondence to be received and there are no modifications to the agenda. First item then, or the next item is item four A, a public hearing. Application for combined preliminary and final development plan review by J- the board has a policy of dropping items that have been on the agenda for at least six months. This item meets that six month category, so that is one of the possible actions for this evening. Unless a continuance is requested.
Mr. Chairman, Jay Lynch on behalf of the applicant. I agree, this application has kind of had a tortured history in front of this board. I think we were in front of you back in October with Mr. Lipshears where we presented our application. And the board had asked us to provide a traffic study to the board. We retained Mr. Bryan Associates to prepare the report. In the meantime, Mr. Lipshears business C C developed C C E development went into receivership. So there was a stay on all further action until we got approval from the receiver to proceed with this application. So at that point, we proceeded again, we moved things along and we got our traffic report to you. So that's, that's why this has taken longer than the normal application is the receivership was the intervening event. And we had to wait until we had Superior Court approval to proceed or continue on with this application. So I'd ask the board to give that some consideration and grant us the additional time to present this application to you this evening.
Are you requesting a continuance?
Well, I do have my traffic expert here. And we were prepared to go ahead and present that to you this evening.
You read the town planners memo on that?
I did, and I think since we're here, we can present it. And if, if the board wants to continue it after hearing the testimony of our expert, that's fine. We'll be more than happy to continue the application again, but
Well, you know that the town planner sent it to Crossman for their review and we have not yet received that review.
Correct. And I guess it's up to the, I'm sorry for interrupting. I'll leave it up to the board. If you would rather get the town engineers input on the report first, I'll be more than happy to have a continuance.
Well, let me also ask this of you. Have you given the town planners memo to your traffic engineer?
I have, and he's prepared to respond to those questions.
My suggestion is that you request a continuance and during the interim between now and the next meeting, hopefully we'll get the Crossman review. And perhaps you can ask your traffic engineer to address the issues that Mr. Walansky raised. How does that sound?
I follow your lead. I can, I agree. I will be, I will request a continuance.
Okay, the applicant's attorney has requested that this item be continued. We have a motion to continue this item.
So moved.
Second, motion is made and seconded to continue item four A. Is there any discussion? Joe?
You know, I think this is a really significant piece of real estate, kind of the gateway into, you know, coming in on East Main Road into Middletown on Aquinic Avenue. So I support the fact that we're being prudent, taking our time to get through this, even if it's a little bit longer than usual, based on the explanation that counsel had given, so.
The comments?
I have a comment.
Again?
So I did read the traffic study. And as we know that there's, there is significant additional development coming in the future in that area. The schools are going to, are being developed. There's right across the street here, some property being developed as well. I'm not sure if, if that was, if the additional traffic from those developments were considered in the study. So I would like
There was no mention of it.
So I would, I would like, because you know, we, we, we have a lot of development happening in town. And it seems like we're getting a lot of traffic studies that only look at the impact on traffic in like a vacuum, in just that development. I'd like to know if there's a way that we can get a comprehensive, kind of like a meta-analysis of all the the cumulative effects of all of the additional traffic that this town will be seeing with all this development. Because I'm going to have a hard time approving, keep continually, continually approving developments. With that understanding that there's going to be a lot, a lot of additional traffic happening in town.
Let me, let me interject something. I think your request is a good one. You should be aware that there is an effort underway. That if it gets approved, it will require that known future developments be included in traffic studies. So I think this is something you should consider seriously.
If, does the board have any guidance as to providing what particular?
I'm sure the planner would be happy to work with you. Any other comments on this motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Who's nay? Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Continued.
Have a good evening.
To the next regular meeting.
Yes.
Number 10.
Assuming we get a comment back from Crossman, if we have to get delayed, if the board doesn't have any
If they, if they come in late, we will continue it again.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is item four B, concept review, request of John and Allison Morgan for planning board review and comment on a conceptual major subdivision development plan for property fronting on Meantonomi Avenue, Boulevard and Vernon Avenue. Further identified as lots eighty and eighty-one on assessors plat one oh eight S E. Is there anyone here for this item? If not?
I had heard from, via email from, from these folks who had requested this concept review for a potential development of that property. They indicated that they're continuing to look at options for what might happen there. I don't know that they've actually purchased the property yet. I think that's still under consideration. So they've asked that this be removed from the agenda and that at some point in the future, they may come back and request a concept review.
Do we need a motion to drop it?
I would just, yeah, make a motion to withdraw the item from the agenda.
We have a motion to drop item four B from the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to drop item four B off the agenda. Is there any discussion? Those in favor say aye, opposed nay, chair votes aye, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is item five A. A request of Ocean State Holdings of three ten West Main Road LLC for modification of the condition of approval included in the decision approving the combined preliminary and final development plan review for the reconstruction of an existing fifteen hundred plus or minus square foot commercial building to allow installation of a screening fence in lieu of landscape screening along the Ray Street property frontage. Property is located at three ten West Main Road, tax assessors plat one zero eight N W lot one six eight zero one. Mr. Martland.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. David Martland on behalf of three ten West Main Road LLC. Here this evening in place of Mr. Silva, who is unable to attend tonight. This involves an application that was before the board back in, in June, dealing with some modifications to the building. I had the opportunity to watch the video this afternoon of, of that hearing. So I could get a context of what was discussed. And I believe during the course of that, that hearing, I believe it was Mr. Valencourt who initially brought up the thought about placing some screening on the, the back property line along Race Street where there is an existing chain link fence. And Mr. Valencourt suggested the potential to use either a fence or other landscape screening. Our client had indicated that they would be happy to do landscaping and that's how the, the condition ended up getting adopted and put into the decision was landscape screening. When the landscape architect went out and then looked at it, there is like literally almost no property available for landscaping. Because of where that fence line is, that property line. So what we would like to propose is to replace the chain link fence with a, a solid fence. And as was discussed in the, the tree commission, to be able to put some landscaping in what we believe to be the public right of way. Where there's a grass strip in there presently, so those would be street trees in there. It would be similar in nature to the, the hotel that's next door where they've got landscaping in that grass strip as well. So we think it'll visually as well as from a noise perspective, the fence will help to mitigate those issues and then the landscaping to help green things up a bit. And provide some, some of that tree canopy.
And, and the tree commission's comments also requested that, or asked whether you would be willing to work with them on those landscape additions outside the fence.
Absolutely.
And you're willing to do that?
Yes.
BJ.
I sat in on this very important meeting and everyone seemed to be in agreement with the idea of the fence. And it was with great consideration. We, we were there for at least an hour and a half about this, I think.
That's a substantial meeting.
Yes, and everyone seemed to agree.
Do you have anything else?
I don't have anything further. I've got Mr. Narcissian with me as well as Pam Rogers to, to answer any questions.
Comments from the planning board?
I think this is a, a very good compromise and, and very kind to work with the tree commission as much as you have. I did originally recommend a fence. Because I knew it was tight quarters. So I think that this resolution is very well put together.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree. The fence, you know, would make a, a big difference there for the people along that road. You know, and would be good, you know, to keep the noise levels down as well. I just had a question. What, what's the designer defense? Is it like a wooden stockade fence or is it like a vinyl solid fence? Or how high is it?
If I could just ask Mr. Narcissian. Could just identify yourself for the record.
John Narcissian, hello. Actually, I think it was asked upon us to get some neighbors opinions on what, what they might, is that, is, am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, you're correct on that.
So we were planning on doing that probably tomorrow, you know, after we met with you all. It could be the, I know the hotel has a white stockade fence. I was thinking more of a wooden, you know, natural fence, but if they, if they you know, folks want a white stockade fence, um, it doesn't matter to me.
Is a white stockade fence, is that vinyl?
Yeah.
So it's
I was thinking wood was, would weather natural and look nice with the trees and if we put, you know.
I would say avoid vinyl if you can.
Okay, well, well, then we'll go with wood. I would prefer wood.
What, what I would like you to do is work with the tree commission, both on the fence and the plantings. But wood would be much better than vinyl.
I agree.
Yeah.
You have any idea how tall it would be?
Uh, I, I, what, would it be?
I believe it's six, six feet tall.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Other comments from the planning board?
They, the tree commission was very enthusiastic about this. And particular, in particular with the cooperation that seemed to be forthcoming.
Yeah, my pleasure.
Other comments from the planning board? Okay. May I have a motion to approve this request? With the condition that the applicant works with the tree commission on both the style of the fence and the plant, nature of the plantings.
So the, the action would be to modify the condition of the original approval.
Yeah.
To institute a screening.
Subject to the condition that they work with the tree commission. Have a second. Let me have that motion, please.
Oh, so moved.
Second, motion is made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed nay, chair votes aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Good.
Next item on the agenda is item six A, final status update on housing legislation introduced in the twenty twenty-five general assembly session and discussion of process for amending applicable town ordinances and regulations. Turn, turn the floor over to Ron.
So you've got a memo that I put together, which has the final outcome of the legislative process for each of the bills that we were tracking. Identifying which bills took effect immediately versus those that take effect on January thirty-first, I guess. January first, I'm sorry. So your information, I think all, all, well, not all of them, most of the bills passed. There were a couple that were held back for further study. What I've started to do is go through and focus first on those bills that took effect immediately upon adoption. To identify the amendments that need to be made to the town's zoning ordinance and regulations. And I've started to do some drafting of, of those amendments, of, of those regulations.
Already started? You've already started?
Yeah.
Good for you. That's great.
So what I'd like to do is work with the solicitor's office to, you know, further refine those proposed amendments and bring those back to you, perhaps at the next meeting. I would suggest that at least the first round, again, those bills that are already in effect, get those out of the way sooner and
So I take it you, you've already prioritized those that need to be addressed earlier rather than later?
Right, right. I think, you know, roughly half of the bills took effect immediately and the other half take effect January first.
Great.
So that's my suggestion is that I'll continue to work on drafting those amendments, work with the solicitor's office and bring some of them, maybe not all of them, but the higher priority items, bring those back to you at the next meeting. At that point, you'll have a chance to review what's being proposed. Oftentimes, as you'll recall, those of you that have been around through this process the last couple of years is that we'll do a public workshop meeting to present the proposed amendments. And then ultimately the board will provide its recommendations to the town council. And then the town council would then proceed with the process, including public hearings towards adoption.
But just for clarification, Ron, most of these, if not all of them, are non-discretionary for the town to enact. So you know, workshops, recommendations aren't going to be terribly helpful. Because even if we don't enact these ordinances, they apply by operation of law anyway.
So those, yeah, right, that's exactly right. So those amendments that did take effect upon adoption, they're in effect. We have to follow the law. Even though our ordinances aren't, aren't up to, up to date.
Does anyone have any comments on Ron's proposal? If not, we look forward to seeing your suggestions. Great, terrific. Next item on the agenda is item six B, the status report. Does anyone have any comments on the status report? I have two. One is on item two, the second bullet on inclusionary zoning. We need, I guess we need to make a decision whether we want to address that or not.
Right, so that's, that's something that's been through the board a couple of times.
Yeah, we have a draft to start with, I guess.
Yep, and we'll have to revise that draft, those draft amendments to, those are some of the changes that we just adopted with the new legislation. So we would have to revise whatever drafts we do have from prior reviews to make sure they conform with the new law.
So let me ask
Into the mix with this
Yeah, let me, let me ask, is everyone familiar with what inclusionary zoning is? I mean, what it means is whenever there is a development proposed, a certain percentage that we would specify would have to be affordable housing.
It has to be?
Right.
Has to be, yes, required.
Adopted, yes.
If we adopt it.
Yeah, if we adopt, that's what inclusionary zoning is.
State law offers towns the option of adopting these Arizona requirements. Some towns have, some towns haven't.
And, and a lot of the inclusionary housing ordinances become less important as a result of the comprehensive permit state law. Because it allows a developer to sort of override much of the town ordinance if they meet the benchmarks within the state law.
Ron, why don't, why don't we do this? For the next meeting, why don't you include a copy of the old inclusionary zoning draft that we prepared? And, and the planning board can discuss at that time whether they want to proceed with a, an update, an update of that. Is that okay with everyone?
Yes.
Okay. My other question has to do with item seven, the traffic study report. This is the first time this is appearing on here, I think. And it's probably wise to let the rest of the planning board know about it. Ron and I are involved with Crossman Engineering in looking at let's say, an improved, requirements for an improved traffic study. Things that we've been talking about, one of the things that you mentioned this evening. Believe me, what we're talking about goes way beyond that. And this is a result of seeing several traffic studies that are virtually useless to us. And what we're trying to do is come up with something that gives the planning board some concrete objective statements or findings that we can use to make a decision. And we're getting close to where we're prepared to come to the planning board with a draft. So you might be seeing it on the next on the agenda for our next meeting. It all depends on how fast Crossman gets back to us. Yes, go ahead.
So is that, is that, just so I understand what, what is being done here, is that a study being done by Crossman on Middletown's ability or the ability of Middletown's streets, roads and, and whatnot?
What this would, what this would do is
Capacity of the
What this would do is give Middletown additional guidelines for a traffic study. I can assure you at this point, these guidelines are quite detailed in terms of what they would cover.
But they're not doing a study, what they're going to do. Guidelines for require, what developers will be required to have a study that's presented. Have to look at other developments in the area, future developments and evaluate their project in context with what's
That's great. Great, because I, I've been very, you know, wary of, of, of approving any more development, honestly. In, in my mind, I think even west, East Main Road with the eighty units here and the twenty-five across the street, the school. It's already a traffic nightmare right now. So I'd like, that's a great idea.
It will, what we're, what we're proposing will include consideration of future known projects, just what you raised, so. So that's what that item is about. Have you heard from Crossman yet?
I haven't, not since I've sent them your, your question.
Okay.
Well, I think, I think BJ has.
Yes, go ahead BJ.
Yeah, I don't know if we all remember, the gas station that came to us at the corner of Aquinic and East Main Road. And members of the board were very concerned about the traffic problem. The exiting and entrance of cars coming off this area. And I believe that the planning board would, did not want to approve it, but the zoning board okayed it. And if all of you go up to that area, you will notice cars trying to get in and out and I'm I think we were well versed to deny it. And I was surprised when the zoning board okayed it.
Yeah, the, the problem the planning board had was that left turn entrance on Aquinic Avenue, on the Aquinic Avenue curb cut. Yeah. But anyway, that's history now.
I just thought I, I remember it.
Anyway, we hopefully pretty soon we'll have some additional guidelines and that'll help us a lot, I think. Any other comments on this? Any other comments on the status report? Are there any other matters to bring up before the board? Are there any other matters to bring up before the board? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I just wanted to address the joint meeting with the town council that's planned for September fifteen. And as I understand it, the town council wants to have our thoughts on how things are working generally, and things that could be modified and so on. And I think there's something that we should prepare for as a, as a group, and, and perhaps Paul will speak for us and so on. But my thought is, it might be a little premature right now. With September and October being the big public hearings for Middletown Center, there's a lot of implication of planning board recommendations versus what the town council did. The town council specifically chose not to ask for our recommendations with respect to the revised zoning overlay that was presented by the developer, even though they didn't accept all of our conditions and so. And I think that we should see how Middletown Center plays out before we give our thoughts on the process generally. So I would suggest that we seek to schedule that meeting, you know, early in the new year or something of that nature.
I, I'm not sure I'm understanding what you're seeking. It seems to me that the, the matter is in the hands of the town council right now.
No, I'm not, I'm not saying just the Middletown Center issue. I'm giving that as an example. That might be the most significant one in terms of interaction between our, okay, and the, and the town council.
Well, we have a, a joint meeting scheduled with the town council.
This is what I'm saying.
What's the date on that?
Fifteenth.
September fifteenth? Okay.
This is my point. I don't think, I think we could have a more impactful meeting if we delayed it a bit.
We had a hard time finding that date, as I recall.
Hard time finding a date.
But you know, I, I, I think Steve makes a good point. It might be worth waiting till after those two hearings.
It may be hectic.
So that we can, you know, the, the purpose of that meeting with the town council is to make sure we're on the same page, that we're, you know, working toward the same goal and trying to find ways to make Middletown better. That's always been the purpose, and seems to me it would be worthwhile postponing that meeting until after those two hearings. I think that's a good suggestion.
Thank, thank you, and, 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 right, because that is the most significant thing we're doing. But I would also like, as a group, to have some discussion as to what we're going to say. I don't think we're all going to just go up as individuals and speak. I imagine that Paul speaks for us.
You each have that opportunity if you want. This is, this is an opportunity for each one of you to address the town council with what you want.
Last time we did this, I have a list of topics.
Yeah.
Not that they were exclusive ideas that you all wanted to not disblock.
We can, you can add an agenda item for our next meeting to discuss this, and perhaps we could come up with a list of things. But I want you all to understand that this is also your opportunity to speak to the town council as an individual board member, so you have that opportunity.
I think Steve makes a very good point. I think Steve makes a very good point, and I do think, you know, with this current controversial issue that will be before them soon, it may be a little difficult for us to to all be on the same page and to be able to have some open dialogue. So I, I think continuing it makes, makes a lot of sense.
Other comments?
Yep, I, I, I agree, I agree with both Charlie and Steve. And I do also want to reiterate what Steve just said about the Town Center project and our conditional approval. I think it should be clear, if, if it's not made clear to the, to the council that our, our approval was conditional on the twenty-something conditions that we anticipated the developers agreeing to. The fact that they did not agree to all of those conditions kind of makes our approval null and void. So, so we do, we as a board, my understanding is, right now, the project does not have planning board approval.
Well. You shouldn't talk about any particular project that's, that's not on the agenda. You know, so I have to caution you, you know, the Open Meeting Acts dictates that you can only speak on a topic if it, if it's on the agenda.
Fair.
Understood.
Can I, can I remind the board members that they can speak as town residents?
During the public hearing.
During the public hearing?
They can, but if there's, there's not a.
That applies to all projects.
Oh, certainly.
That applies to all projects.
Yes, of course you can.
So I remind you of that.
So, so then, if I can, I don't know if we should do this as a motion or as a suggestion, but I'll put it in the form of a motion that we ask the, we ask Ron to seek a later date on the schedule for the town council, for us to have a meeting sometime not sooner than November or December.
I, I don't think we need a motion. You just do that, right?
Okay, okay.
Town clerk to find some potential dates in and out.
Perfect, and that we, as, and at some subsequent meeting, discuss the potential topics.
Yeah, we, we can put that on next meeting agenda to discuss topics for our joint meeting. Any other comments? Any other comments? Have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, opposed nay, chairman votes aye, meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.